In two minutes, we will begin. All right, I will go ahead and reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. We have a full house tonight. Welcome, everyone. Happy to see you. Can I have a board member certified closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, that only such public matters were identified in motion and convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Solly.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And we are going to ask that, I think there are some young ladies from Lafayette High School who are going to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll come up to the podium here, and please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Kiefer for announcements and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We invite everyone to join us tomorrow and wear purple to show support for our military students and their families. April is the month of the military child, and as we know, military children often could experience frequent moves and family separations through deployments. They demonstrate, they being the families, and children demonstrate resilience and courage throughout, and as a school division, we encourage everyone to wear purple tomorrow and show support for the unique circumstances these families often face. Also tomorrow, our Family Academy Lunch and Learn webinar will take place, and the topic tomorrow is navigating generative artificial intelligence. That session will dive into guiding principles that are shaping our approach to AI, that will discuss the importance of ethical and responsible use of AI, share practical resources and support for families. If you are interested, please visit our website to register and receive the Zoom link. And finally, as acting superintendent, it is really exciting for me to talk about what's happening in WJCC next week. Beginning on Tuesday, we will start to welcome all of our 5th grade students to their receiving middle schools in a program that we're calling Level Up. And on Wednesday, all of our 8th grade students will visit their next high schools. They will receive a welcome presentation, a building tour, and have a panel with current students as we begin the process of transitioning folks from one building to the next. In addition, next week, on Thursday afternoon into the evening, we are excited to welcome our kindergarten registration family fest that's taking place at Warhol High School from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There'll be food trucks, raffles, face painting, games, and activities, and families that participate that have kindergartens that are there to register will have an opportunity to ensure your rising kindergartner is ready to go for school and get registered. Finally, on Friday, and this is a huge week for the school division, and we know that it's going to be terrific weather Monday through Friday, we are celebrating our exceptional games on Friday at bringing our students and staff from across the division together, celebrating students' abilities, engaging, and adaptive field day experiences. Next week is sure to be an exciting time, and we look forward to sharing pictures with the community after that. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. And now we will have students and staff recognitions. Mr. Hoseng, will you join me on the floor?
Good evening, Madam Chair. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to all the dedicated volunteers who support WJCC schools every day. Tonight, we are honored to celebrate our outstanding volunteers for their invaluable contributions across our schools. As we recognize our Volunteers of the Year, please come forward to be celebrated. Audience, please hold your applause until all volunteers have been acknowledged. From Bright Beginnings, Sherri Press. From DJ Montahue, Athena Carrigan. From J. Blaine Blatton, Kyle Debook. From James River, Naomi Kane. From Laurel Lane, Zoe Weddington. From Matoka, Stephanie Shannon Skimmyhorn. Matthew Whaley, Tom Squire. From Norwich, Natasha Scott. From Berkeley, Elizabeth Lurberg. From James Blair, Jason Gennard. From Tuano, Bruce Mayer. And from Lafayette, Leah Horrell. Our volunteers generously give their time, skills, and knowledge to enrich our schools and uplift our students. Their commitment and strong advocacy for student success do not go unnoticed, and we deeply appreciate all they do. Each one plays a vital role in our community, and we are honored to recognize and thank them for their invaluable partnership. Congratulations to our 2025 Volunteers of the Year. Also tonight, we are excited to honor Melissa Che, who received the School Administrator Award from the Virginia Association of Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCC LA. Ms. Che, can you please come forward? The state award recognizes the school administrator in Virginia who has given outstanding support to FCC LA on the local, state, and national levels. Ms. Che was nominated for the award by one of our high school teachers because of her commitment to educational programming and providing opportunities for students to grow and excel. Thank you and congratulations, Ms. Che. Madam Chair, this concludes recognitions for this evening.
All right, and now we are excited to hear a school spotlight from Norwich Elementary School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kiefer. I am Veronda Matthews, the proud principal of the Roadrunners at Norwich Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to share this special spotlight from our dynamic learning community, one that showcases our students' creativity, curiosity, and passion for learning. In today's ever-evolving digital world, teaching students to confidently navigate and create with technology is no longer optional, it's essential. By starting early, we're preparing our students not only for secondary school success, but also for a future where these skills will be foundational. To match this necessity with students' high interest in emerging skills, I'm excited to introduce to you the Norwich Computer Club. The Computer Club is a vibrant before-school program for select students in grades 3 through 5. Under the guidance of the incredible duo of our elementary technology teacher, Mrs. Cindy Cattell, and our technology integration coach, Mrs. Mandy Collier, students take on weekly tech challenges that stretch their skills and spark their imaginations. From designing engaging PowerPoint presentations to learning the basics of coding, Canva, and even exploring artificial intelligence, our students are developing real-world digital skills in a fun, challenging, and collaborative environment. The culmination of their hard work is the opportunity to compete in the Great Computer Challenge at Old Dominion University, a regional technology competition that Norwich Elementary has proudly competed in and won in the past. It's a powerful way for our students to apply what they've learned, push themselves further, and represent our school with pride. With that, I'm proud to present a brief video that highlights the innovation, teamwork, and joy found in the Norwich Elementary Computer Club.
Our club is designed to teach students various skills on the computer. They learn how to draw, make presentations, edit videos, code, search for information, and make various types of products on the computer. We select the students to be in the club and to join us at the Great Computer Challenge at ODU to compete and represent Norwich.
I am really excited to do the Great Computer Challenge and try to get a gold medal.
Students are given a problem. They have an hour and 45 minutes to solve that problem, and during that time, they have to create a product that judges then look at afterwards. Some students have to put video clips and music together into a one-minute video. Some students are coding a whole new program that's either a game or a story.
So, right now, our project is to, is to inform people about artificial intelligence, and I think we're doing really good with it.
I'm learning a lot about Canva, and I still make flyers at home when I need to.
Really, more importantly for us, it's to learn how to be a good role model, represent our school well, collaborate with each other, work well in a team.
So, working with a team, you also, not only you have to share your ideas, you have to, like, make sure your team agrees as well.
I like to be the leader sometimes, but I, I know that I have to let my other teammates try, and so I let them do that.
It's really neat to see the students' progress and then seeing them really work as a team. I hope they walk away with, like, new friendships, new relationships, and then I hope they walk away with a joy of working in design that is not just playing games on computers, but there are practical skills that they can walk away with.
Ms. Matthews, we thank you for bringing that wonderful highlight to us. Okay, we will now move on to public comment.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding verbal outbursts or any audible demonstrations during the speaker presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, and therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. We have an exceptionally large pile of speaker cards tonight, so the time limit will be strictly enforced. I say that whenever we have this scenario. It's not personal, but I will cut you off mid-sentence, no matter who you are or what you're saying. So, with that, who was our first speaker?
We have 48, so I'm going to call five names at a time so that you can line up. Our first speaker will be Dr. Kristin Bolem, followed by Stephen Mainz, Virginia Mainz, Robert Mandrilli, and Mike Joseph. Dr. Kristin Bolem is first.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Dr. Kristin Bolem, and I stand before you this evening not only as an educator, but as a mother, and more specifically, the mother of a Hornsby Middle School football player, who is also a coastal crush lacrosse player with a di- who is also a Coastal Crush lacrosse player with a diagnosis of Tourette Syndrome. During this school year, my son had the opportunity to play for the undefeated Bay Rivers District Champion Football Team at Hornsby Middle School. Football is a VHSL-sanctioned sport, and his participation on this VHSL team changed everything for him. For a child navigating the daily challenges of a neurological condition, joining a structured, inclusive team provided something profound. Confidence, belonging, responsibility, these weren't just words, they became a part of who he was. The discipline and camaraderie he found on the football field carried over into the classroom, improving his focus, his relationships with peers, and his pride in his own achievements. For the last three years, he has also played as a goalie with Coastal Crush, a recreational lacrosse league. Through this experience, he's grown in ways I never imagined. He's learned how to lead under pressure, how to communicate effectively, how to fail and recover with grace. Lacrosse has challenged him physically and mentally, and it's given him a space to be both fierce and vulnerable. But not all students have access to this kind of growth opportunity, and that's why I'm asking you to consider making lacrosse a VHSL sport. By doing so, you widen the door for all WJCC students to gain access to a sport that promotes physical health, mental resilience, leadership, teamwork, and social development. When we sanction a sport through VHSL, we are promoting student success. Let's give more students the chance to experience that opportunity through lacrosse. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our students.
Thank you, Dr. Bowlem.
Our next speaker is Stephen Mainz.
Oh, there's no applause. There's no applause. No applause out. You will be asked to leave the room.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Steve Mainz, and as I reflect this holy week, I'm struck by how faith and experience shape our views. In the first century, the cross was a brutal tool of agony, shame, death, and human punishment reserved for people considered not quite human. Christians could have clung to that grim perspective, seething in resentment, but we're called to transcend it. The cross now symbolized triumph over adversity and death, urging us to love our neighbors and our enemies. A torture device became a universal beacon of victory, and in doing so, fundamentally changed us. We could stew over ancient wrongs by Romans and Jews, letting our hatred poison us, but condemning them categorically would ignore Rome's innovations in governance and the Jewish deposit of faith and law that are the bedrock of our very society. Will we gorge ourselves on the bile of democratic-led massive resistance or seventeenth-century prejudice until, like Herod, our bellies split? Or will we celebrate our collective victory over prejudice that shines today? Was Jesus victor or victim? An enslaved Americans, noble souls who endured unimaginable cruelty, or cowering victims? Did they pass down a tradition of stolid resistance or a habit of flinching at every real or imagined slight? Let's choose victory. Let's honor our forbearer's strength, casting their story like the cross is a heroic epic to inspire us all. Nothing honors our forbearers more than educating our children to carry on the legacy of overcoming hardship, a task we're failing by every measure. Every dollar is needed to ignite our children's future. Squandering it to repaint the gym floor forfeits what our predecessors won. Let's forge victors, not victims.
Our next speaker is Virginia Mainz.
Thank you, Mr. Mainz.
I was an educator in a school district just about this size for forty years, and we discovered that you didn't have to treat every kid the same way and every teacher the same way. Teachers are so bound to teach every child that what our district did was grant, mini-grants. Some of them as small as two hundred and fifty dollars, some of them all the way up to fifteen hundred dollars. The money that would go to repaint the school and pay for everything involved in renaming it could go to teachers. We're creative, we love the teaching, and one of the things that happened, the fifteen hundred dollar grant, six years later, became a state model project for the entire state. And so, it doesn't always take a whole lot of money, it just takes a lot of creativity and the ability to let the teachers do what they do best, create and teach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mainz.
Our next speaker is Robert Mandrilli.
My name is Robert Mandrilli, Madam Chair, members of the school board. What's in the name? Simple question, maybe not so simple an answer. A while back, I was made aware of the fact that James Blair School was going to be changing to some, at this point, unnamed school. There were several candidates, there were several people that were involved. What struck me probably more than anything else was the estimated cost of doing so. I've heard numbers anywhere ranging from a hundred thousand dollars up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You people would probably have a better handle on this. But the question that remained in my mind was, how is this going to help the average student at currently James Blair? How is this going to help the needy kids? The special needs kids? The bilingual programs? All the things that we have been discussing here for quite some time, but it's only discussion. At a time when taxation is a serious issue in James City County, we're looking at a school board that's getting ready to throw tax money away with three hands. Does the tax money that you're willing to spend on renaming the school also go to changing the bleachers? Repainting the floors? All necessary things that are going to benefit our kids, benefit the programs, and make our schools better teaching venues for future careers? Members of the school board, I think we really have to rethink what we're doing and the reasons why we're here. If our best interests lie in the children, in the students, and in what we are supposed to be doing to ensure their best education, I don't believe that renaming the school and spending the money associated with it is really going to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandrilli.
Our next speaker is Mike Joseph, who will be followed by Karen Berksigle, Richard Timbella, Eric Buckel, Anthony Lazuri, and Logan Hilstrom.
Yes, good evening, my name is Mike Joseph, and I am a resident of James City County. And I'm here to speak and recommend that we discontinue the naming or renaming of James Blair School. And it's based on the survey that you've published, and you're ignoring the survey completely. The survey in all counts, no matter how you cut it, is that the results show that nobody wants to rename the school. And so, I say you should respect the survey and not ignore it, which it seems like you have because you continue on to solicit names for the school. I recommend strongly to discontinue this effort, and there's a lot of ways to cut this. But you save the money to go through this. Let's see, and what's interesting when you look at the numbers is that the participation level, you show that the public, there are nine hundred twenty-three total responses from the general public. That's less than two percent of the general public. Remember, try to spread that over the number of registered voters in James City County, Williamsburg. Very low participation, it does not reflect the community. And even in the school system, there was low participation, twenty-two percent, fifteen percent, forty-four percent. That was the staff and the parents and the different grade levels, and the James City students in Blair was eighty percent. But no matter how you cut it, the numbers say do not rename the school. And another way to look at this is that how do you count it? You have no, yes, and unsure.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Our next speaker is Karen Berksigle.
I wanted to explain the interesting way, but anyway, you know.
You can submit your written comments to the clerk, and she'll email them to us, thank you.
My name is Karen Berksigle. I've lived and paid taxes in the Roberts District of James City County for the last thirty-five years. I'm here to address the potential renaming of James Blair Middle School. I have spoken to many people who oppose this change, and I have heard two basic arguments against it. One is that WJCC cannot afford the costs of this change and that there are more pressing problems. Like others, I am very concerned about our abysmal local test results, and I am appalled that there are fourth graders who cannot read. We must correct that injustice. But we can also correct the historic injustice of naming a school after the man who institutionalized slavery in the colony of Virginia. It is never too late to do the right thing. The objection I hear to this is that those who want to rename the school are trying to erase history. It is not erasing history to decide that no child should have to attend a school named for the man who enslaved their ancestors. It's just that simple. Thank you for continuing to consider changing the name of James Blair Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Berksigle.
Our next speaker is Richard Timberlake.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, thank you for having me back again. And yes, I did have to come tell my name to make sure I wrote it wrong, sorry about that. I came to you before to speak about the history of James Blair. James Blair did not enslave my ancestors, sorry. But what I did speak about when I was here before, the history of the positive achievements made by that man, about what he stood for to make this colony, to make this community better. But that's, I spent all my time doing that, I didn't get the money. One hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is the projected amount. One hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is the projected amount to rename this school. At a time when attendance is flat and grades are low, and the school board always comes every two years to the James City County Board of Supervisors looking for more money to get better teachers, to get better bus drivers, this is a waste of money, waste of time and money. Last thing is, if you look to your right, you see up on the wall, you want to change that, you pay for it. Thank you very much, I appreciate you having me.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake.
Our next speaker is Eric Buckel.
Hello, my name's Eric Buckley. I'm the, I've been on the coaching staff for Lafayette for the last four years. And before that, I've coached many of these young men since they've been in third grade. If it's all right, I'd like to recognize four of our seniors that have been playing for us for a very long time. Not only are they fantastic lacrosse players, but fantastic human beings. Brad Rubenstein, number sixty-nine. Ivan Lindbeck, number thirteen. Joe Dill, number two. And Bryce Diggs, number eleven. Unfortunately, because we're not a VHSL-sanctioned sport, these four fantastic human beings have not had the opportunity to pursue their dream to play college lacrosse. If given that opportunity, if they would have had the opportunity to play against competition, I have no doubt in my mind that they would have found themselves on a Division One roster. I have another example, and I hate to call out young men, but we have a freshman on our team, number six, Tyson Long. I promise you, he's a generational talent. This kid has been forced to make the difficult decision to leave his family, leave his friends, leave his student body to pursue his dream to go to a boarding school in Northern Virginia, because I promise you, he's that good. If we could give these kids the opportunity, there's many more like these examples. And I'm begging you, not only to give us support, but please act on it. We've talked about it for some time, and I think the time is now come for us to take action. And that's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Our next speaker is Anthony Lazuri.
Hello, my name is Anthony Lazuri. I'm a defender at Lafayette High School Lacrosse Club, and I'm a sophomore at War Hill. I've been playing lacrosse since I moved to Williamsburg and got introduced to the game at six years old. Both of my siblings grew up around this game in this town and at the west, just like all of us did. But me speaking today is not about them, it's about my life with lacrosse. As I mentioned, I have played lacrosse since it got introduced to me around six, studying in the Warriors program with some of the players I play with right now. I can say for myself at that age, I loved this game, and I loved it so much, it was all I could think about. When I got home from school, I would go out and play for hours against no one but my imagination, dreaming of playing college ball even that young. But the truth is, this will never happen for majority of players. But they always say with determination and hard work, you can make it to college or even D1. But the darker truth for us at Lafayette is the work doesn't matter. You can be the hardest-working guy, and it doesn't matter because the team says club in it. Our team is laughed at like a joke because we can't be VHSL. So many of us who have this will and have this determination simply won't cut it because the league won't, what we plan won't allow it to. We need this to be changed so that that six-year-old inside of me can remember that it is possible through determination and not just depending on the league patch on our uniform. I need that child in me who loves this game to be able to play it as a real team and not have a club in the name. Because why should I have any different opportunity if I put in the same work? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lazuri.
Our next speaker is Logan Hilstrom, followed by Luke Belmonte, Cole Dean, Hunter Miller, James Cast, and Michael Burns.
Hello, my name is Logan Hilstrom, and I'm a freshman at War Hill High School. I've been playing lacrosse since I was in the fifth grade, and lacrosse has been a big, played a big part in my life, and it is a great sport, and I love every second of it. Lacrosse, I think lacrosse should be a VHSL sport because it can open up many opportunities for kids. And if it isn't, if it has, if it's a club sport, then most kids don't have the opportunity to go play in college. And I would like that opportunity, so therefore, I want lacrosse to become a VHSL sport. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hilstrom.
Our next speaker is Luke Belmonte.
Hello, my name is Luke Belmonte, and I'm a ninth grader at Lafayette High School. I think all lacrosse team deserves to be recognized as a VHSL team, not just because of not just the club, but because of our dedication, skill, and competitiveness we bring to every practice and game. We train just as hard as other varsity teams, compete against strong programs, and represent our school with pride. We organize our own practices, manage our schedules, and still hold ourselves at high standards, often without the resources that VHSL teams receive. Making all lacrosse team a VHSL sport will bring more support, funding, and visibility, helping us grow the sport, attract more talent, and build a long-lasting future for players. It's time we get recognized for what we earned on and off the field. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Belmonte.
Our next speaker is Cole Dean.
Hello, my name is Cole Dean, senior. This is my first year playing lacrosse, played football for four years. Football is a VHSL sport, meaning I got equipment, I didn't have to pay anything for it. And the main reason I didn't play lacrosse for most, my freshman, sophomore, junior year, was because I saw the cost associated with it. I finally decided to, you know, put money into it my senior year because I figured why not? And I haven't regretted it, but I know a lot of people, a lot of kids, who want to play lacrosse but just cannot afford it. And if it was VHSL, then they wouldn't have to worry about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Our next speaker is Hunter Miller.
My name is Hunter Miller, I'm a junior at Lafayette High School. I think lacrosse should be a VHSL sport because we have a lot of talented kids on this team that could play at the college level if they were able to be seen. And they don't have that opportunity without being a VHSL. The scouts just don't really look at club teams as much as they do for a VHSL-certified sport. And there's a lot of kids in this community that play lacrosse and would love to play lacrosse for their school and be able to rep their school's team, but they just don't have that opportunity. And by adding lacrosse to our school's athletic program, we would be expanding opportunities for students that may participate in other sports as well, football especially. It's a great secondary sport, you can play in the offseason to keep yourself physical and keep yourself active and just stay around, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Our next speaker is James Cast.
Hi, my name is James Cassidy, and I'm a sophomore at War Hill High School.
Hi, my name is James Cassidy, and I'm a sophomore at War Hill High School. I have really enjoyed playing lacrosse for the past three years and would love to play the next year at the VHSL level. I am learning teamwork and gaining confidence while playing lacrosse, so I'm asking you to please put lacrosse into the school budget for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Our next speaker is Michael Burns, followed by Joe Dill, Landon Liebler, Bryce Diggs, Bryant Summers, John Slakovic.
Hello, my name is Michael Burns. I'm in the twelfth grade at Lafayette High School. I believe lacrosse is a great sport. This is my first year playing and I enjoy playing. Playing lacrosse has made me more active, more coordinated, and more energetic. Lacrosse has made improvements to my routine, and I believe that it should be a part of a VH, VHSL. It is a great sport that requires teamwork and dedication, and thank you guys for your time and thank you for what y'all do for the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Our next speaker is Joe Dill.
Hello, I'm Joe Dill, a senior at War Hill High School. I've been playing lacrosse since the third grade, and I've been a part of the Lafayette Club Lacrosse Team for all four of my high school years. I think that the lacrosse teams in the community should be recognized as a VHSL sport because I feel a lot of players in our community have the talent and capability to play lacrosse at the next level, but they're kind of looked at as less and not really recruited as heavily because of the title club. If lacrosse were to go to VHSL, I believe there'll be many more opportunities for players to go play college lacrosse. And I also wanted to invite everyone to our next couple of games that I'll leave over here with the clerk. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Dill.
Our next speaker is Landon Liebler.
Hi, my name is Landon Liebler, and I'm in the tenth grade at Lafayette High School, and this will be my third year playing on the Lafayette High School Lacrosse Team. Although playing lacrosse and being part of the team, which to me means family, I've learned a lot from the coaches and my teammates these past few years. I know what I've been learned, I know what I've learned from them will help me when I graduate and learn how to work with others in my future career. I always look forward to our practices, our gatherings, and especially our games. The immediate transition to VHSL will benefit the community because it will give more kids the opportunity to play and learn more about lacrosse through their schools. Thank you for listening and doing a great job of our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Liebler.
Bryce, our next speaker is Bryce Diggs.
Hello, my name is Bryce Diggs, and I'm a senior at Lafayette High School. If we can get Lafayette to become a VHSL sport, it would mean a lot to me and all the other boys up here. I'm a senior, and I know I wouldn't be able to play VHS, VHSL, but it is something I would have liked if I had the opportunity. The program receives less recognition within our community because it is not a varsity sport, but we would be able to better compete and get possible looks from colleges if we were. We have many, we have had many outstanding players come through this program, but due to not being a varsity sport, they were unable to play for the colleges they should have been able. Thank you for your time and working hard on our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Diggs.
Our next speaker is Bryant Summers.
Hello, my name is Bryant Summers, and I'm in the tenth grade. I see a lot of my teammates who are like very talented and have the ability to go play in college, and they're just kind of passed over because we're a club team and we do play a lot of competition, private schools. We play really good competition, and I think, you know, if we became VHSL, we'd get way better funding, way better recognition. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Our next speaker is John Slakovic, followed by Max, Maximus Ashby, Titus Ashby, Brad Rubenstein, Andrew Buckley, and Preston Metzuma.
I don't even know why we bother holding these meetings anymore, honestly. If you guys are just going to disregard the public, you decided to listen to a few loud people's ridiculous outcry. After repeated comments from citizens, students, and parents alike speaking out against the name change for this school, you still decided to move forward with the process. You then distributed a questionnaire to the public in which you received an overwhelming response to still keep the name of James Blair. Yet you are planning to ignore the public's opinion. Your response is that the public is not educated enough to make this decision and not competent enough to know what they think. Well, I'm here to tell you now that we know what we want, and the repeated misallocation of our school's resources by this board is what needs to stop. Mrs. Ordigo, I personally checked off your name four years ago to put you in this seat, and since taking over the chairmanship, you have left us out in the weeds. I'm calling on you now to put an end to this ridiculousness. Yes, James Blair owned slaves, as almost every one of that time did, to build structures throughout our great town, but there is zero account of him being a cruel man. He was a pastor and a man that made this town much of what it is today. We all know that this endeavor will do nothing to help bridge the gap, students who desperately need social and emotional support. This will do nothing to help teachers who continue to struggle, struggle on a daily basis to make it through the day. We are simply to throw out the accomplish, are we simply to throw out the accomplishments of all men and women who have sinned in the eyes of someone three hundred and seventy-five years in the future? What about the sin of adultery? What about the sin of coveting thy neighbor's wife? Sins which Martin Luther King Junior himself has committed? Are these mandates handed down from God Himself, less than socially accepted practices of slavery that haven't existed in this country in almost two hundred years? Are we to ignore all of His accomplishments as well? Where does this madness end? Is it just confined to white men or is it for everybody? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slakovic.
Next speaker is Maximus Ashby.
Hi, I'm Maximus Ashby, and I'm an eighth grader at Hornsby Middle, Middle School. I played lacrosse for seven years, and it's the most fun sport I've played. Being a part of VHSL will give us the resources to be seen by coaches and scouts, as well as improving as a team and individually. This will help bring our hard work talents to the collegiate and professional levels. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby.
Our next speaker, speaker is Titus Ashby.
Hello, my name is Titus Ashby, and I'm a junior at Lafayette High School. I've been playing lacrosse for five years, and I've loved every moment of it. Lacrosse means so much to me, and even though I've had the opportunity to graduate early, I chose to stay because I want to be part of Lafayette and its lacrosse team. Even though I graduate, even after I graduate, I want to continue supporting the team, and I hope you will want to support our team as well. I ask that lacrosse becomes a VHSL sport and allows us to go against other teams at a higher level, allowing us to, sorry, allowing us to have, be seen in a better light, creating educational and professional opportunities. These opportunities can help players reach their full potential in lacrosse, in lacrosse and in school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby.
Our next speaker is Brad Rubenstein.
Hello, my name is Brad Rubenstein. I'm a senior at Lafayette High School. And two things I've always loved about lacrosse are the competition and the community. HR Lax and Coastal Crush have worked hard to build up the community at an early age for the kids in our community. But the, the high school level in Williamsburg not being VHSL has cut that short and caused people to want to leave the game of lacrosse. And that's just unfair to the guys who are coming up into the schools and going into a higher level because they don't get the college looks and they don't get the recognition they should be able to get when they go to the high school and playing the teams at a high level to go and recognize their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein.
Our next speaker is Preston Metzuma, who will be followed by Jason Metzuma. Oh, sorry, did I skip somebody? Sorry, no. I've got a lot going, sorry. Andrew Buckley. I apologize.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Buckley. I'm a junior at Lafayette. To me, lacrosse isn't just a sport, it's a community, a legacy, and for many of us, a lifelong passion. It's been an honor playing lacrosse for seven years, whether through travel, club teams, or school ball. Over the time, I've been nominated as team captain, made multiple all-conference teams, forged incredible friendships, and learned lessons that shaped me into who I am today. Despite this rich history and opportunities it's offered me, lacrosse remains overlooked in many schools in Virginia, and it's time to change that. Lacrosse deserves to be a VHSL sport. Why? Because it fosters teamwork, discipline, and leadership in ways that rivals any other sport. I've seen firsthand how it brings people together, how it turns strangers into teammates, and teammates into lifelong friends. It has connected the connections I have made through lacrosse. Lacrosse is, is one of the most meaningful, or, sorry. There's a bittersweet side. Watching the sport I love, the one that has been, that has given so much to me, has faded in the background, and it is heartbreaking. Students who might fall in love with lacrosse never get a chance because it's not given the recognition and the resources it needs to thrive. This isn't just a loss for the individuals, but a loss to our schools and communities. By making lacrosse a VHSL sport, it can reunite this flame and ensuring the future generations a chance to experience its magic. It's not just, it's not just a sport we, it's not, let's not let the sport we love be forgotten. Let's celebrate it, support it, and give it the place it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Now Preston Metzuma, followed by Jason Metzuma, Reed Sheldon, Liam Hashem, Morgan Monroe, and Ivan Lindber, Lindbergh.
Hello, my name is Preston Metzuma, and I'm a junior at Lafayette High School. I'm here right now because I'm requesting you to add lacrosse in your budget next year and making it a VHSL sport. I'd hope for you to implement these changes because lacrosse means a lot to the community, and it gives kids in our area who are just as good, if not better, than other kids, gives them to receive the same judgment as their recruiting, as their, as their peers in recruiting. Some of the best athletes have came through this area, have been lacrosse players, and yet they don't receive the same recognition and respect as other, other kids in our area due to no one looking at them. And as of right now, we only have one Division One lacrosse player on the men's side, and many others in other divisions in collegiate lacrosse. And this board could change the narrative if we implemented this as a VHSL sport. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. Metzuma.
Our next speaker is Jason Metzuma.
Hello, my name is Jason Metzuma. I'm the president of the Lafayette Lacrosse Club and on their coaching staff. So we've heard a lot of comments about lacrosse already today, but I wanted to touch on accessibility. And what we want to do so desperately is reach other communities within our community. We have had some, some players on our team that tried it out thanks to the friendships that they have from other sports. And I remember having to register a young man last year in my truck because he didn't have the necessary funds to do it. And he asked me, he said, wait a minute, why do I have to pay $200 to play this? I don't have to pay for football. I don't have to pay for track. And then I had to stutter and stammer and say, well, because it's not VHSL, and, and I had to go down the whole road of why he has to pay. And then he was like, so this doesn't count for anything? It's unfortunate. He's one of the best football players at Lafayette today, and we're missing out on athletes and friendships because of things like the barriers to entry, the cost. And I think with, he's, and he's not on our team anymore because he couldn't, he couldn't afford it. And I think that with your help in making it VHSL, we can open the doors to a lot of different kids. And I think that that's what this is all about. I had a meeting with Principal Rice about this issue, and he was all for it because in his mind, and I'm sure that you know the statistics better than I do, but as long as kids are doing something like sports and they're connected to their school, they're staying out of trouble. And all these boys back here are staying out of trouble. They're with us, and they're some of the best boys that I've ever been in contact with. And, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metzuma.
Our next speaker is Reed Sheldon.
Hi, my name is Reed Sheldon. I'm a freshman at War Hill High School. I'm here today to speak about lacrosse becoming a VHL sport. I've played lacrosse for the past five years and it has truly been a transformative experience for me. Not only has it allowed me to grow as an athlete, but it has helped me form a lasting friendship and development of portment, friendship skills. These are skills that have stayed with me both on and off the field, and that is why I think lacrosse should be a VHL sport. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
Our next speaker is Liam Hashem.
Hello, I'm Liam Hashem. I've been playing lacrosse for four years now, and it's unfortunate seeing that the talent on our team can't go anywhere with the current standards of lacrosse being not a VHL sport. Players like Connor Rice, Sam Boyer, Jack Troy were unfortunately not given the ability to have a scholarship, receive funds, or anything like that when making the transition from a senior going to play college. Unfortunately, they had to stick to club or find groups to play lacrosse with and weren't able to play as Division One players, Division Two, or Division Three. Along with that, stuff like funding, a lot of players on our team aren't able to play the second year after being introduced to the sport. Things like funding, which my family had to pay for, seeing players being left behind and not being able to play the sport, which we told them about, which they fell in love with, and now hit with a stop sign saying, we can't, you can't play the sport anymore due to your lack of funding or the neighborhood that you come from. And what now? It just amounts to nothing. We're playing so hard, the competition that we play is so fierce, and now we're not able to receive any scholarships or even get to the next level. I thank you for your time, board.
Thank you, Mr. Hashem.
Our next speaker is Megan, is Morgan Monroe.
Hello, I'm Morgan Monroe. I have four boys, and I'm also, surprise, surprise, going to talk about lacrosse. We have a sixteen, fourteen-year-old, and an eight and a five-year-old, so we're kind of in it for the long haul, and we hope that we get to see the area go VHSL. And I guess too, as a mom, the other thing I would like to share that I was a little nervous about football for my kids, or anybody's kids, but especially, I'm happy to see lacrosse because I feel like at any age or size or build or talent, you're able to find a spot on the team, and I think that would be great for other players as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Our next speaker is Ivan Lindbeck, and our next set will be Jane Doherty, Jackson Dietrich, Samuel Buchanan, Jessica Anderson, Collins Warfield.
Good evening, my name is Ivan Lindbeck, and I'm a senior here at War Hill High School. I've been playing lacrosse for the past eleven years, and for the last four, I've had the privilege of playing as part of the Lafayette Lacrosse Club. Lacrosse has been a part of my life for as long as I can remember. It's more than just a game to me. It's been a constant, a source of structure and a purpose of growth. With this being my senior year, I'm not here for myself anymore. I'm here for kids like my little brother, who will, who have the skills to play in college but will be neglected since he will not, since he will be forced to play for a club team. This sport has the ability to open doors to college opportunities, scholarships, and even careers. And most importantly, it's giving kids a healthy outlet and purpose for, in a team environment. If we do not support lacrosse as an official high school sport, we're holding back students who could benefit more from everything it has to offer. So today, I'm asking not for myself, but for my brother, for his teammates, for the future athletes of Lafayette and War Hill. Let's give the, let's give them the chance to play for something bigger than just a club. Let's bring lacrosse to a high school sport. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lindbeck.
Our next speaker is Jake Doherty.
Hello, my name is Jake Doherty, and I'm a junior at Hampton Roads Academy. Lafayette Lacrosse has been a very important part of my life for the last three years, and it has allowed me to meet a lot of new people. Without lacrosse, I wouldn't be the person I am today. Unfortunately, I will not be able to play with my teammates next year as I will be playing for my school, Hampton Roads Academy. With this being said, the boys that will be playing on this team next year deserve to be recognized for their hard work and talent and to be able to play to their fullest potential. I would hate to see all the talent of my peers go to waste, and I hope you feel the same way. I encourage all of you to sympathize with our team and help us become a varsity sport. Thank you for your time for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Our next speaker is Jackson Dietrich.
Hello, I'm Jackson Dietrich, and I'm a freshman at War Hill High School. I've been playing lacrosse since fifth grade, and I wish I picked up the sport sooner. I have made many memories and friends that I probably wouldn't have if it wasn't for lacrosse. We have a lot of talent in the area, and it is not fair that those players are not getting the same looks that they would if lacrosse was a varsity sport. Additionally, Additionally, a lot of our players have never played lacrosse before and I'm sure more people would come out to play lacrosse if it was a varsity sport. Finally, the University of Richmond is one hour away from here and they are a top fifteen men's Division One lacrosse program with other schools like C N U, U V A, and Hampton. I would like to play lacrosse in college, but because the sport is club, I will not get as many looks from colleges. And, uh, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich.
Our next speaker is Samuel Buchanan.
Hi, I'm Sam Buchanan, a junior at Lafayette High School. I began playing lacrosse last year as, as a sophomore. At my first, my first year approaching lacrosse, I was thinking I wasn't gonna be that good. But I had great upperclassmen and teammates and coaches who changed my perspective. Coach Taylor, Taylor recognized my potential, transitioned me to a long pole, allowing me to start L S M my, in my first game. Leading to my start of my success, I am honored to able to represent number twenty-five for my childhood best friend who I lost last year. One of the lessons I learned from lacrosse is setting positive examples, especially for the younger guys, in supporting my success. I'm grateful for coaching, for the coaching staffs. I consider each and every person on this team like family and I hope to see future opportunities, especially for the younger players, which I'm hoping lacrosse becomes a V H S L sport. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan.
Our next speaker is Jessica Anderson.
Hi, good evening, uh, School Board. Um, I'm Jessica Anderson, um, and I am talking about two things. One, um, I find it interesting that we are praising James Blair for his accomplishments. Why ignoring those accomplishments were only possible because he was permitted to build a school and college on the backs of the variant slave people who were denied freedom or opportunity, let alone a formal education? We are debating about protecting the legacy of a man who at age thirty-five married his seventeen-year-old bride. And while I'm not sure if he committed adultery against said bride, I'm surprised that it would stay in a room where adultery would be minimized and compared to owning humans. The total cost of the name change would represent about point zero five percent of our total annual budget. And if I, um, and I urge the community and board members to find an upcoming opportunity to view the Village Initiative's The Displaced From The Birthplace of America video, uh, full film that's coming out and see the deep history of our community and consider why this may matter so deeply to so many members of this community that have been long generational members of this community. Um, secondly, I want to just bring up, uh, the D E I A, uh, requests from this current administration at the federal level and just state that things like Title One, um, interventionist programs, those are in fact D E I A programs. Changing language around, um, the, um, current positions in our school board to appease somebody, um, I don't think that's something that we should be looking to do. I know that you have not formally discussed it, but I hope in your conversations moving forward, you recognize that there are some things worth protecting and I hope that W J C C protects those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Our next speaker is gonna be Collins Warfield, followed by Scotland Dietrich, Joseph Penetra, um, Elise Slumberg, Tyson Long, and Parker Arnold.
Hi, my name is Collins Warfield and I am an eighth grader at Toano Middle School this year. I've been playing Warriors Lacrosse for many years now. This season, we have close to thirty middle school girls who will be graduating and moving up to high school that want to play lacrosse for their high school career. Lacrosse is a great team sport that boosts our confidence and gives us great friendships. This is why it is important to have lacrosse as a sport in our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warfield.
Our next speaker is Scotland Dietrich.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scotland Dietrich and I am a sixth grader at Toano Middle School. It is my great desire to play varsity lacrosse for the Warhill Lions. I have been playing lacrosse with my brother since I was seven years old. He's been my best coach and biggest fan. We both love watching each other play, but can't because of where we both have to travel for our teams. My brother plays in Norfolk and I play in Richmond because we don't have lacrosse as a varsity sport at Warhill. My, my goal is to play lacrosse at the college level. And right now, my only hope for that is to play on a team in Richmond or combined on a club team with schools in York and Hampton. I, I know a lot of my friends would play lacrosse if it was offered, but they aren't lucky enough to have the support for start of costs for equipment, fees to play on the team, costs to travel, and having their parents drive them to these other locations. Please make boys and girls lacrosse a varsity sport in Williamsburg, Jamestown County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dietrich.
Our next speaker is Joseph Peretra.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Peretra and I'm a sophomore at Lafayette High School. Uh, this is my first year playing lacrosse, but I can already tell that a lot of my teammates have a lot of talent and the potential to play in college. And, um, I believe it would also benefit, benefit us as a V H S L sport because getting to college and being able to play lacrosse not only lengthens our opportunity to play the sport that we love, but to further our education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peretra.
Our next speaker is Elise Slumberg.
Good evening. My name is Elise Slumberg and I'm an eighth grader playing on Warriors Lacrosse. I'll be in high school next year and I would love to continue playing lacrosse. I started playing in sixth grade when a school friend invited me to come to a practice. I fell in love with the sport and I cannot imagine being able to continue playing the sport as a high schooler. And I know many others that are rising high schoolers playing and, and that are wanting to play because it is hard for them because it's not a V H S L sport. Please for the future of many players, make it a V H S L sport. Thank you for listening and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Slumberg.
Our next speaker is Tyson Long.
Hi, my name is Tyson Long and I'm a ninth grader at Lafayette High School. I'm an honor roll student, three sport athlete over the, uh, L H S band. I'm a member of the Lafayette Lacrosse team and have been playing the sport for ten years. As a student at W J C C schools, I've been a student at W J C C schools since kindergarten. I enjoyed my experience as a student and athlete. It saddens me to fulfill my dream of playing Division One lacrosse in college. I will be leaving the school system in August. Since W J C C schools and Bay River districts do not support lacrosse as, at a, uh, varsity level, the opportunities for college exposure and visibility are not available. I love the game lacrosse, my teammates and my friends outside of the sport. It's been fun having teammates who have never played come out and compete in my favorite sport for the first time. If lacrosse was a varsity sport at Lafayette, I would, I would have, I would not have to make the decision to leave. I hope you're, you strongly consider adding, uh, varsity lacrosse so my friends, underclassmen, and eight-year-old brother will not have to make the select decision and family cha- family changing decision in the future, giving them the opportunities that I don't have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Our next speaker is Parker Arnold, followed by Kalen Schleicher, Marco Sardi, Gillian Cooper, Jill Piles, and Jackie Bridworth, Bridforth Williams.
Hello, my name is Parker Arnold and I am a ninth grader at Lafayette High School. This is my first year ever playing lacrosse, but the sport has truly had an impact on my life. The joy this sport has brought to me makes me wanna continue playing this sport throughout my high school years. I hope that if this sport was a part of V H S L, that the impact the sport has had on me could be shared with other people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Our next speaker is Kalen Schleicher.
Hi, I'm Kalen Schleicher. I'm on this, I'm in seventh grade at Berkeley Middle School. I'm on the middle school Williamsburg Warriors team and I have been playing for the Warriors since I was five years old. I'm also lucky to be able to play for a club team in Richmond. But my high school, Jamestown, still doesn't have a varsity lacrosse program. In order for me and my friends and teammates to reach our goals like playing college lacrosse, we need varsity lacrosse teams to play for. Women high school lacrosse players have the highest percentage of continuing their athletic careers and moving on to play in college. About one in eight girls who play lacrosse in high school will play in college. That percentages, that percentage is much higher than soccer, field hockey, swimming, or any, any other varsity sport available in Williamsburg. Without a high school program to play for, many of us girls will miss out on an opportunity. I am very invested in the sport and I, as you can see, so is my community. Thank you for your time and I hope you will consider adding lacrosse to a high school sports programs.
Thank you, Mrs. Schleicher.
Our next speaker is Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kiefer. My name is Marco Sardi. I'm a teacher here at James Blair Middle School and I'm also the president of W J C E A. I wanted to thank those members of the board who voted for a budget of real need for our schools to try and serve a changing population and to attract good educators. I know Dr. Kiefer and his team will be working hard to find the best solution forward in a hard situation. When members of the community, uh, excuse me, when members of the county board of supervisors expressed they felt there was not adequate public disappointment in the shortfall, we committed to correcting that. Uh, and a week later, those who support our schools in the community have sent over seven hundred emails to that board supervisors. Uh, so we hope that they've received the message loud and clear that we value education. And when facing such intense belt tightening, it is important to know what priorities are most important to those who will have to make the most of those resources, which is our staff. Our educators deserve to have a say in the decisions that impact their employment and the conditions of that employment. This board voted down collective bargaining in the fall on two grounds. Uncertainty of the future of our schools and of assurances that we need not use collective bargaining to achieve the contractual changes we need for sustained systemic change. Those contracts, uh, perhaps will be influenced as a result of these feedback sessions held throughout the fall and winter and focus groups that have convened in the spring. And W J C E A has made a concerted effort to participate in those groups in good faith to show cooperation with the wishes of the board. And yet, with contracts about a month out, we have not seen significant evidence to support that our contracts will be significantly changed for the better. It is not lost on a union that these focus groups mirror the same bargaining units that were proposed at the beginning of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi.
Our next speaker is Gillian Cooper.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gillian Cooper. I'm an eighth grade student at Hornsy Middle School. I've been playing lacrosse every season since I was five years old. I'm now fourteen years old and I'm a rising ninth grader student for Jamestown High School. Lacrosse means so much to me and, and my team. It's been a part of my life for so long and I plan to continue doing what I love in high school and throughout my academic career. Playing lacrosse is something I've always looked forward to. Just like many other sports, lacrosse teaches leadership skills and life skills to everyone, including high school students who are also about to be living on their own. Lacrosse is a sport I wish everyone had the opportunity to play. Making lacrosse a V H S L sport would impact me and so many others in our lacrosse community in the best way possible. Thank you for taking your time to consider this topic.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Our next speaker is Jill Piles.
I, I haven't been here for a while since the COVID time, but I'm very impressed with all the young, uh, public speakers. They're great. I hate to follow them. Uh, we were blessed to have a couple of the teachers of the week, of the year. Uh, Mr. Will Hyde, I don't know if he's here, from Lafayette, uh, Mr. Elliott. Um, I just hope that you guys can get lacrosse going. And one of my issues, um, about Blair, there's other issues that are more important. You know, how, if it's a hundred thousand, ninety thousand, a hundred twenty thousand dollars to change Blair, how many jo- uh, jerseys would that be? You know, how, how would that help the teachers? I also have questions about Berkeley. We went to Berkeley. Nobody's answered me about, uh, Berkeley plantation and slavery. Slaves there are gonna change Berkeley, so that's another a hundred thousand. And then Jamestown, if you look up King James, he, um, treated slaves bad, so I, I just don't understand that. But if you could answer some of those questions, that would be great. Um, I think that's about it. Um, just, uh, I won't, happy teacher appreciation in May. Thank you for, uh, your service. And, um, my son graduated a couple of years ago and is doing great, so, um, thank you all. Also, there's a petition going around about, um, uh, two of you are appointed, uh, by the city of Williamsburg. Five of you are elected, uh, by direct, so you have direct representation. So I would, um, encourage the people from the city of Williamsburg to sign the petition, to have everybody elected because if it's a vote for four to three, sometimes the two people from Williamsburg will outweigh, um, the vote and sway the board. And I think everybody needs to be directly elected. Thank you.
Ms. Price? Our next speaker is Jackie Bridforth Williams, followed by Cooper Flanagan, John Flanagan, and Arden Cr- Crisada? Crusada, I'm sorry if I messed up your name.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Jack Winbridgeforth Williams. I'm the executive director and founder of a nonprofit for educational equity, The Village Initiative, and also producer and director of historical films that tell the stories of black people in this community, which I encourage, if you have not seen, to take the time out as leaders and educators in our community to come and view the films with us. And I thank those who have taken that opportunity. I had written some things to say, um, however, um, listening to some of the folks that spoke tonight kinda moved me in another direction. Uh, and what I saw was that there are people in this community who fail to see my humanity just as James Blair failed to see my ancestors' humanity. Some stated that what's in a name, what's in a name, Martin Luther King, who was assassinated for his work as a civil rights activist. Medgar Everest, who was gunned down in the driveway of his home where his fam- while his family slept inside because he was an activist fighting for my right to be able to vote. Goodman, Schwerner, and Cheney, three young civil rights activists who went down south to fight for my right to vote. That's what's in a name. None of their names will ever grace any of these schools and we know that, which they should. Um, so with that said, uh, if they can't grace the schools, then surely and enslaver shouldn't be on the schools. And Martin Luther King said in nineteen sixty-six, it's all, when is the right time to do the right thing? It's always the right time to do the right thing and to be on the right side of history. And I also ask that you think about, um, the courageousness of people like Fannie Lou Hamer, who was beaten within an inch of her life. And she said, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. And we're sick and tired. How long must we wait for those to see our humanity? And I ask those who speak in opposition this evening to be courageous and look within yourselves and be truth tellers. Take the money off the table and recognize what chattel slavery did to my ancestors.
Our next speaker is Cooper Flanagan.
Hi, my name is Cooper Flanagan and I'm in ninth grade at Warhill High School. I play lacrosse for Lafayette High School and I've been playing lacrosse the majority of my life. I would like the sport to go V H S L, become an official sport in our district. I mean, because it's a great way to make friends and and since it could be a V H S L sport, it could get more people to play a game and interest and grow the game of lacrosse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Our next speaker is John Flanagan.
Good evening. My name is John Flanagan. Um, I've been a coach in this area for youth lacrosse and high school lacrosse for over ten years. I've had three daughters graduate from Warhill High School, all played lacrosse. My son is a ninth grader, plays lacrosse. Uh, them, along with most of the kids you see in this room today and who aren't here, uh, are two sport athletes with excellent grades. Uh, lacrosse teaches these young people a lot of good qualities as far as leadership, character building, uh, competition, respect. And, uh, the parents have the full support of lacrosse in this community. We have over, I'd say, over a couple hundred kids aged five to eighteen that play lacrosse right now. Uh, at least forty of them are in this room tonight. We are the only part of Virginia with a major metropolitan population that does not have high school lacrosse in the public high schools. I hope you see by the, uh, amount of people in the room tonight, uh, vocalizing their wishes and hopes for lacrosse to become a V H S L sport, that you listen and take this back and help us get this approved as a high school sport. Please do not wait for other counties, uh, or the district to, uh, make that decision for us. Virginia Beach did it. They have a league. They play teams all over the state. In the first two years, they're already playing for state championships. We can play schools in Virginia Beach. We can play schools here. We can play schools in Richmond. The kids already do that now with their own funds, on their own time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Our final speaker is Arden Gray- Criz- Gerda? Gerda? Arden? I'm sorry, I'm trying to read.
Hello, my name is Aiden Gerda. I'm a junior at Lafayette High School. I think the VHSL should reconsider its current stance on lacrosse by recognizing the profound impact the sport has on young athletes by allowing more flexibility in the rules and regulations. They can foster an environment that promotes skill development, teamwork, and sportsmanship. Lacrosse teaches valuable life lessons, encourages physical fitness, and builds lasting friendships among players. Embracing challenges in the lacrosse program will not only enhance experience for athletes, but also contribute, contribute to the growth of the sport as a whole, inspiring future. Generations to engage this dynamic and enhancing activity. And thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Gerda. That concludes our public comment portion. Um, it is eight o'clock and I'm going to offer the, um, my board and staff and anyone who plans to keep sitting here, a five-minute recess to stretch your legs and use the restroom.
Madam Chair, can I quickly say something? Can, can everyone stay for a second? Can everyone stay? I just want to thank, first of all, the coaches and the, and the parents for raising and bringing up such fine students that will be able to come up in front of this crowd and speak like you guys, you, you all did tonight. I think that was amazing. To the students, to the, to the young men, young women, um, keep fighting, keep, keep, uh, participating in the sport. We're, I, I can't say we, I would do everything that I can to help you and, and get lacrosse into, um, into our school system. Being a high, former high school, former college athlete, I know what it means to, for young individuals to play a sport in high school, to compete in high school, and to compete in college. And so I just want to commend you for coming forward and, and give you my word that I will fight to get lacrosse onto, uh, onto the, um...
There's no applause. That's, it's not appropriate. Burn recess. Is everybody up here? Okay. We are back in our, we'll resume this meeting and we will continue, um, with our agenda. We're at, uh, our consent agenda. Begin with item 7.01, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll, March 2025. 7.02, approval of minutes from the regular meeting on 3/18/25. 7.03, approval of minutes from the special call meeting on 3/19/25. 7.04, approval of minutes from the special call meeting on 3/25/25. 7.05, approval of minutes from the work session on 4/1/25. 7.06, approval of resolution R1325 National Teacher Appreciation Week. 7.07, approval of resolution R1425 National School Nurse Day. And item 7.08, approval of resolution R1525 Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Um, item 8.01, approval of personal actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Item 8.02, approval of adoption recommendation and purchase request for secondary English and language arts curriculum. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the adoption recommendation and purchase request for secondary English and language arts ELA curriculum. Down here?
Yeah.
Textbooks materials purchases requested from Houghton Mifflin Hardcore Publishing Company as presented for a total of $1,099,831 associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there any discussion or questions? Miss, no. Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
8.03, approval of the local plan and budget for career and technical education, otherwise known as our Carl D. Perkins Grant for school year 2025-26. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the local plan and budget for career and technical education, Carl D. Perkins Grant for school year 2025-2026 as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Are there any questions on this item or discussion? Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
8.04, approval of adoption recommendation and purchase request for grade K through five math textbooks and instructional materials. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the adoption recommendation and purchase request of KIDM for grade K through five math textbooks and instructional materials for a total cost of $534,191.52 and the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Ms. Aller. Oh, I'm sorry, was, was there any discussion on this or questions? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Uh, 8.05, approval of purchase request to update aging analog A- A- iPhones? Not sure if I'm saying that right yet. Systems across WJCC public schools. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request of updating aging analog iPhone systems across WJCC public schools to OPEC, OTAC, under annual contract number 21-1519 for a total cost of $112,698.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley and Mr. Riffle. Any questions? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
8.06, approval of purchase request for controller upgrades at Stonehouse Elementary School. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for controller upgrades at Stonehouse Elementary School to B- BAS control systems for a total cost of $123,200 and the associated budget transfer as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. No questions, I'm assuming, but I'm looking around. Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
8.07, approval of award of contract for invitation for bid for Matthew Whaley Elementary HVAC replacement. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the award of contract for invitation for bid, number 202-50720, Matthew Whaley Elementary HVAC replacement to Vertexco for a total cost of $4,335,000, 300, $4,355,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Any questions? Any discussion? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
8.08, approval of purchase request for the Berkeley Middle School walk-in refrigerator replacement. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for the Berkeley Middle School walk-in refrigerator replacement to Crest for a total cost of $105,951.92.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And finally, 8.09, approval of budget transfer request. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the budget transfer request of $500,000 from transportation to operations and maintenance for utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Any discussion on this? Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasus.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, we will now move on to our discussion about the current state of the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Over to you, Dr. Kiefer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board, community. Since early January, we have engaged in a process of looking at revenues and expenditures as we have developed what we felt like was a budget of need. That budget was approved by the board and shared with our funding partners. We have since received additional information from our funding partners relative to dollar amounts. And over the course of the last couple of weeks, uh, we have begun the process of adjusting our request in order to help the numbers more closely align. Couple of things that I want to mention as we get started with the present... Couple of things that I want to mention as we get started with the presentation this evening. Item one is that we are still anticipating additional revenue from the Commonwealth of Virginia by way of the General Assembly and Governor in terms of a budget amount. We do not know what that total amount will be. Secondly, I think it's important for us to acknowledge that our primary, there are two primary focuses as we put our budget together. The first focus was around compensation for staff. We heard that repeatedly through the fall and into the budget process that compensation was a key, critical aspect. And we have prioritized compensation throughout. Additionally, in our budget request, we prioritized more personnel to help our student population that was most in need. And as we've gone through the last couple of weeks, we have continued to prioritize compensation. And as you'll see this evening, we are making the recommendation that a number of the positions that we had initially requested and quite frankly, still feel like are valuable to our school division, simply won't make the budget based on the dollar amounts. As Ms. Ewing talks through that information, we're happy to answer questions as we go. At the end of that presentation, there's also a look forward on the C I P, the Capital Improvement Program, and want to share with the board some, some key items from that. So Renee, with that, if you'd get us started.
I need to read my disclosure statement.
Right, Mrs. Hunley.
As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-six school budget because my husband is an employee of the W J C C schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The localities have released their proposed budgets for fiscal year twenty-six, so this evening we will be reviewing the impact to both our operating budget and the Capital Improvement Plan. In March, the board approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five point two million, which included a request of the localities of approximately one hundred and nineteen point two million. When comparing the amount of funding for the school division in the locality's budget documents, the total is one hundred and eleven point nine million, which results in a revenue shortfall of seven point three million. Over the next several slides, I will review the expenditure increases included in the School Board approved budget by category, which will include mandatory increases, position requests, other requests, and compensation, as well as administrative recommendations for addressing this revenue shortfall. Here you will see the mandatory expenditure increases within the School Board approved budget, which includes items such as required F T Es, contractual commitments, and New Horizons tuition. Recommendations for changes in this area include reducing the language instructional educational program teachers from ten to nine. When we calculated the needed F T Es based on current students and the new staffing ratio, we need thirty-one point zero nine F T Es, which we had rounded up to thirty-two. We are recommending that we round to thirty-one, allowing us to reduce this request by one position. The addition of four paraprofessionals and a point five F T E teaching position at James River was initially proposed in the budget to address mandated needs outlined in students' I E Ps. The Department of Special Education has determined that existing personnel can be reallocated to meet these service requirements for the paraprofessionals. As the school year has progressed, some staffing and placement changes have allowed us to make these adjustments as we plan for next year. While this adjustment will place additional demands on school staff, it will allow the division to remain in compliance with federal and state special education mandates. These adjustments in the mandatory expenditures amount to two hundred and fifty thousand. Additional positions included in the approved budget can be seen here, which amounted to three point one million and a total of forty-eight point eight five F T Es. Administration's recommendation is to reduce these requests down to eight hundred eighty-four thousand, representing thirteen point eight five F T Es. As you can see with the cross-throughs, the majority of the positions would be eliminated from the budget. This includes removal of the elementary teacher assistants for behavior support, expansion of the restorative center, gifted resource teachers, additional special education aides for self-contained classrooms, and the central support positions. Administration recommends maintaining one elementary school teacher allocation, which is a reading specialist position for Stonehouse Elementary based on their enrollment, the pre-K assistant principal, and transitioning the elementary security officers to speech-language pathologists, and the grant-funded portion of the K-five literacy coordinator into the operating fund. This is a reduction of two point two million and thirty-five F T Es.
Quite frankly, this was a difficult recommendation for administration to bring forward for the board's consideration. I think that we have, over the course of the last two and a half or three months, clearly articulated the, the need for these positions, specifically for our elementary school students and staff in elementary schools who are on a daily basis working with students who have behavioral support needs, which was part of the rationale for adding in those nine behavior support positions. Additionally, we believe in alternative education opportunities, non-traditional education opportunities for our students. And not being able to fully take advantage of the restorative center is not ideal. And in the third place, I, I want to mention that some of our students need additional enrichment and acceleration, which is part of the rationale for the inclusion of the gifted resource teachers. As we discussed this internally, it, it was a challenge. And, and I, I want to be clear with the board and in our community that we believe that these positions continue to be necessary for the organization. But in a scenario where it was, it, there was a need to reduce the request, we placed the emphasis on compensation and the staff that are currently in place. And as you'll see from the next slide, tried to prioritize that for the board's consideration. Slide after this slide. Sorry.
The expenditure increases included in the other category amounted to four hundred and sixty thousand, the majority of which is three hundred and forty thousand for A P exam fees. Administration regretfully recommends eliminating these requests from the budget. In the area of compensation-related items, here you will see the original amount included in the budget, the recommended adjustment, and the revised amount. The adjustments include reducing the year-one compensation study amount for the teacher scale. The overall average increase for teachers will still be five percent. We have just costed out the new scale for current staff and can reduce the amount by fifty thousand. The next adjustment is related to year-one of the compensation study for the unified scale. The budget originally included funds to implement the recommended changes to grades one through sixteen at a cost of six hundred thousand. We are recommending that we adjust this by one hundred thousand, which will allow us to address the recommended changes for grades one through eleven, which would take us through the clerical staff. Adjustments for the remaining grades would then need to be addressed in year two or three. Currently, the budget includes additional funds to continue offering summer school at two elementary sites. We are recommending reducing this amount by one hundred and fifty thousand and only offering elementary summer school at one site. We will still be able to serve about the same number of students as we did last year. Last year, we served three hundred and eighty-two students. With this new model, the number of students in each class would increase from fifteen to twenty, but we plan to add additional teacher assistants to cover the increased class size. We are projecting to serve four hundred students at a single site. The last adjustment that you see here is for the stipend request and contract date changes, which total two hundred and forty thousand. The adjustments in this area amount to five hundred and forty thousand. The last category is the savings that we have, that have been incorporated into the budget. You will see the original amount, the recommended adjustment, and the revised savings amount. The first change is related to bus driver F T Es. The current budget includes a reduction of nine F T Es. We are recommending reducing by an additional ten F T Es for an additional savings of three hundred and fifty thousand. We currently budget for one hundred and fourteen F T Es. With this change, our F T Es for fiscal year twenty-six will be ninety-five. Currently, we have about eighty drivers. Ideally, we need between ninety to ninety-five drivers, so we do not recommend reducing this number any further. The second change is attrition savings. We originally budgeted at five hundred thousand and feel that we can increase that by seven hundred thousand for a total budgeted attrition savings of one point two million. Historically, we budgeted between five hundred thousand to one point three million in attrition savings. Attrition savings come from positions remaining unfilled for longer periods of time and changes in salary and benefits for new employees versus the amount budgeted for the position. The last change in this area is a new item for longevity savings. We have a handful of teachers that are retiring this year that currently receive longevity pay. This is a savings of thirty-five thousand. Overall, this will bring our budgeted savings to two million sixty-five thousand. On this slide, you will see a summary of the expenditure increases by category as included in the School Board operating, our School Board approved budget with the revised amounts that we have reviewed this evening. Overall, it is a reduction in expenditures of four million five hundred and sixty-five thousand. As I shared earlier, the shortfall amount when comparing what we asked for from the localities in the budget versus what is included in their proposed budget is seven point three million. After factoring in the adjustments of four point five million that we've shared this evening to expenditures, the revised shortfall amount is two point eight million. We do know that the General Assembly's adopted budget will provide us with an additional one point nine million in revenue. As the state budget is not yet finalized, you'll see that we've estimated a range for additional state revenue of seven hundred and fifty thousand up to the one point nine million. Once this revenue is factored in, the amount of additional funds needed would range from eight hundred and fifteen thousand to two million. This would either need to be in the form of additional revenue from the localities or additional expenditure reductions in order to balance the budget. I'll pause there. Those are the changes for the operating fund before I move into the Capital Improvement Plan.
Do board members have any questions or comments they'd like to offer on what you've heard so far?
I think you have a question.
Microphone.
From slide five, and you have the positions, position requests revised, you have the nine elementary school security officers. Those are already employees under a grant.
Yes, they're currently under a grant.
They're current employees.
And we have applied for the grant again. We just won't know until May if we're going to receive the grant, so for now, we're leaving them transitioning.
And the pre-K.
It's also, it's also important to note that this, this would be the last year that we are eligible for the grant. Part of our rationale for initially including them in the operating budget was that the, our grant opportunity sunsets, so if we wish to maintain school security officers, they need to migrate into the operating budget.
And the, the pre-K assistant principal, is that person currently an employee or is that something, someone that we would be hiring new?
It's a new position.
Anything else? Okay.
Now I'd like to review information related to our capital improvement requests for fiscal year twenty-six as compared to the locality's proposed budget. Like the operating fund, the localities took different approaches to how they funded our requests. James City County's proposed budget includes one hundred percent funding of the amount that we requested for schools within James City County, which includes all schools except Matthew Whaley, Berkeley, James Blair, and Cooley Field. In addition, they funded the county's proportionate share of enrollment, eighty-nine point five percent of the cost for division-wide projects such as parking lots, bus replacements, safety and security, storm drain repairs, as well as the pre-K centers. The city of Williamsburg's proposed budget includes ten point five three percent of the amount requested for all maintenance and improvement projects across the division. The city's proposed budget moves the request for the pre-K centers into fiscal year twenty-seven and the request for additional buses for pre-K into fiscal years twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Over the next several slides, you will see the projects and the funding that we requested for fiscal year twenty-six with the associated locality's budget amount for each project and the difference. Our fiscal year twenty-six C I P includes the following projects: a bus canopy at Clara Bird Baker, road entrance at D J Montague, refurbishment at Blatton, replacement of asphalt roofs at Laurel Lane, HVAC and chiller replacement at Matoka, auditorium refurbishment, window replacement, and gym HVAC replacement at Matthew Whaley, paved playground space at Stonehouse, gym refurbishment and a partial roof replacement at Berkeley, replacement of skylights and a generator at Tuono, turfing Cooley Field, division-wide projects for parking lots, playgrounds, school bus replacement, safety and security, as well as storm drain repairs, and lastly, additional pre-K construction funding and funds for additional pre-K buses. While the city of Williamsburg's budget document shows pre-K funding moved into fiscal year twenty-seven, we understand from city administration that there is approximately one point eight million available in an education capital projects reserve, which is available upon the request of the school division. This amount is not reflected in the total for Williamsburg for fiscal year twenty-six. The School Board approved C I P plan included a total request for fiscal year twenty-six in the amount of twenty-six million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. James City County's proposed budget includes funding in the amount of twenty million eight hundred and sixteen thousand, and the city of Williamsburg's proposed budget includes funding in the amount of one million four hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred for a difference of four million two hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred. May be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before I look to my colleagues and ask for questions, I do want to let fellow board members know and members of the public that School Board leadership, School Board Governance Team leadership, and we have had conversations as, as late as this morning with leaders of Board of Supervisors and City of Williamsburg. We understand that there are some major discrepancies in how things are, are being calculated. And but before we start pontificating on those discrepancies as individual board members from the dais, I just want you all to know that we, we are in conversation with them and working through some tricky dynamics that also feed into the, the contract negotiations that they're engaged in, and they are engaged in them, and they are working towards a solution. So I just want to preface this discussion or potential discussion, are any questions that might come with, with the, with the knowledge that our funding partners are speaking with us and in conversation with us and working with us? So with that, are there any questions or comments at this point? Mr. Riffle?
Just for the general public to know, when you look at the, let's just look at the one, this is Clara Bird Baker, bus canopy, but it says difference, but it's not in red. That means we're kind of in the green, right, like we're, we have that money, but we can't spend it outside of that bucket, right, because we've required it to go to the bus canopy, so. Could you talk a bit more about that? There's like less flexibility for these type of things than.
James City County budgets by school, so the James City County funds are for the bus canopy project. For the city of Williamsburg, our understanding is they budget and lump sum. We could request a transfer of those funds to another project.
Right. I'm not going to ask you to do the math here, but I know there's a little bit of room in there, but I just think it's something to note as we're looking at this presentation. I appreciate, this is more of a comment, Madam Chair, I appreciate the, the quorum you, you have for our friends and local government. I just think it's, the, let's just take one example. We had a large showing of lacrosse players come today. The Cooley Field turf is a place where you should probably go and speak to about here, seeing a one point five million dollar difference and getting that product approved, which is where really they will play. I mean, like, this is the reality of how this works, so. Could spend your time advocating and the place where the funding happens for these things, because we have to live in the reality of how school boards work, which is things need to be in place for things to happen. It doesn't just magically appear. So I, I, that's my argument for, as the public start seeing these things and there are places where we can advocate, we, we must do our part and do diligence, not to pick on the lacrosse players, but, you know, I'm, I'm for expanding sports, but these are the things that can constrain local government when it comes to doing the right things. And we talk about academics as the, our number one point, so. And there's a lot of products on here that are moving into that, like the pre-K construction and things like that, so I, it's, it's, it's hard to kind of grapple with both of these things, and I appreciate our staff for doing their, their part and kind of laying it out, but there's a lot of work to do here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Are there, are there comments or questions from board members?
I'd just like to make a comment. Thank you, Ms. Ewing and Dr. Keever for your work on the budget. You know, I think for the viewing public, right, we've had a lot of conversation around academic achievement. And for us to be able to invest in places where we have students that need support, as well as students that are gifted and need. as well as students that are gifted and need support in a different way, you know, these, this is unfortunately the places where we have to start cutting, which is, you know, it starts to push back our ability to do those things. And so, you know, I applaud where we have been thoughtful about keeping things in. I think the other, you know, big line item is the compensation study. And so our desire to keep that in and to continue to retain our teachers and staff is paramount to this board and I think, and making sure that healthcare remains something that's affordable for our, our employees and their families. And so I think as a board, we're grappling with how do you spend money towards academic achievement versus how do you spend money to make sure that you retain those best and brightest teachers that are going to help drive that? And so that's one of the places where the board is, we are trying to balance all of those needs.
And Mrs. Henley?
Yes, I was going to say mine to the end, but I think this is definitely, so, thank you, Ms. Ewing. I don't, your job is very hard and, you know, as a person that's wanted to be a teacher since age four and practiced from ten and then served for thirty-six years and seen budgets come and go, I have not ever seen a budget this bleak. And I think when we were introduced to it, I actually stopped breathing for a minute when I saw the cross through and the red, red. And all I could think about is when we cut, we will bleed. And that's what I thought about the red. And I hope the public, the general public watches this, sees this, and can't breathe as well. The three things that were most, of course, compensation was very important, but school-based staff, school support staff, and the central support staff are not only crucial and vital, they're needed, not something we wanted, it was needed. And I, I still have, like, my stomach is just like, I have never seen anything like this. And I hope the public is outraged and in a good way, and they fight for, for what we need for students to be successful academically.
Anyone else at this time? I will just, I'll just summarize by saying that we, we acknowledge as a board that this, that this was a particularly large ask. We've had large asks in recent years with significant raises, but this, this was another level even because we had a compensation study that was set in motion some time ago, came to fruition when it did, was incorporated into the budget. And it is truly needed, especially when you compare, compare us with our regional competitors. And then we also made it a point, to anyone who's been following along, to tie the additional requests to specific things that we, we have been told and we have learned and we have absorbed would, would be the best to enhance the academic achievement, especially where we do recognize that there are discrepancies that we'd rather not be there, achievement gaps that we absolutely need to close. And one of the things that we heard over and over was the behavior, especially at the elementary level, was significant, significantly inhibiting learning. And so rather than, so it's not always just giving teachers a raise, sometimes you have to put another body in a classroom so that, so that someone can take care of two or three kids that may be being disruptive and learning can continue. So that's why we focused, you know, we had a lot of additional FTEs that, that looked maybe superfluous. They were not just full, full teachers. It wasn't forty-eight point five teachers per se. I, I do know that, that some of my esteemed colleagues said, well, we don't have more students, so we don't need more positions. They, they weren't simply more teaching positions, they were additional aides that would have helped in very specific scenarios that would allow learning to be enhanced and continue. So, but we have to do what we have to do. That's, it's not in the cards this year. That doesn't mean that we don't think it's important. It doesn't mean that our funding partners don't think it's important. I think that in our conversations, they've acknowledged that, that too, and they have a limited number of, of dollars that they brought in in a given year. And we, we happened to give them a big one this time, and so it just couldn't be done this year. But moving forward, I know that there's been a lot of conversation about perhaps rethinking how we plan for our budgeting, maybe a slightly more farther forward-thinking, strategic way of thinking about our budget so that we can anticipate large needs and space them out and give funding partners warning and, and have it be more of an ongoing dialogue over the course of time so that everyone knows how to piece it together over time to make it actually feasible. Because we'll, we will always have a big ask and it will never quite be enough, and then they will always say no, and then we'll just feel like we can't do what we need to do. But there is probably a way to maneuver so that most of it can get done, maybe not all at once, but in a, in a reasonable amount of time. And so moving forward, I know that this board is interested in continuing those conversations, and I, I think our funding partners are too. So I, I understand the gloom from Mrs. Henley, but I think that, I think it is hopeful that we will move forward and, and understand maybe a better timing or a better strategic way to have our, our asks presented and continue to work with our, with our funding partners who also have to make tough decisions, you know, just like Ms. Ewing has a tough job. We know they have a tough job, they have to compensate a lot of different critical employees in our town. And so we thank them for their work and we will continue to work with them. The numbers are not final yet, we don't, we don't fully know what we're getting from the state yet. We're still waiting on some deadlines from the governor on May second.
So I was going to mention that if, if additional information is available to us, we would come back to the board for the May sixth meeting and provide any updates that are available, recognizing that we need to put the board in a position to adopt or a final budget after both localities have done theirs, the first part of May, first couple weeks of May. So we'll, we will get you any additional information we have on May sixth and then try to put this body in a, in a great place to approve a final budget on May twentieth.
Great. So, yeah. Anything else? You have a conclusion?
I have a question, and Ms. Ewing, you may not have the answer, so that's fine. But I just want to understand, like, futures use account, future schools use accounts, how do those work and, and what are we allowed to use those funds for? Are there state regulations around that? Because I know we were, we've been returning six million one year. I mean, it looks like there's about almost seventeen or eighteen million across the accounts, both, I think the county, it looks like, has about seventeen million and the, the city has just under two million in those accounts. And so I would just love to understand maybe for the view, and I know they hold back nine percent, so sixteen million, or fifteen million, nine, six ninety-eight at the county and one point seven million in the city. How are we able to access those funds? What can those funds be used for? Like, what are the state regulations?
There aren't any state regulations. We're trying to, I've asked for some clarification from the localities on how do we utilize those funds, but typically it would be used for capital improvement or one-time purchases. You wouldn't want to use those funds to balance a budget per se because you've got, you know, the majority of our budget is for salaries and benefits, so it's not sustainable to use those one-time funds to plug a hole in a budget one year because it has to be available the following year to maintain those salaries and benefits. And so, you know, we've been very intentional the past couple of years with the amount of funds we've returned, knowing that there was a shortfall with the pre-K funding.
I believe each year with the remaining funds that are available, the chair has provided a letter to both of the funding partners asking for those funds to be designated to make up a shortfall in pre-K. I think also it's important to remember that each fiscal year, school divisions are required by code to return any remaining funds back to the locality. So that's, that's one piece that needs to occur for the school division. And as Ms. Ewing said, our ability to, to fully understand the opportunity to take advantage of the future school use account, I think would be really important in the next month, month and a half, as we hopefully wind down the process of getting the pre-K site plans approved and moving out to bid on that as well.
All right. I think that concludes this discussion for tonight. We will, coming to our end here, so we'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Riffle, can I start with you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy Tax Day, everybody. I hope you're enjoying budgets as much as we are. I just want to say a special thank you to our volunteers in our school. It's nice to recognize the best ones or ones with certificates, but there's a lot of volunteers that just give a couple hours or when the time and their teachers need it. So it's just a good time to just recognize our, our parents and community members and people who play a part in our classrooms every day. Happy month of the military child. As a Navy brat, I missed this one last year, I didn't wear my purple, so I got it right with Ms. Chen, my other colleagues, just don't have a dress today. But no, I think we're all here appreciative of the work that our service people do every day for our country and our community. So a special thank you to our students. And I'm just, future known, I'm excited to go to the exceptional games again, and that's about all I have, Madam Chair. I've expressed my woeful comments and the parts of them we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Of course.
Mr. Hossein?
Just briefly, just as Mr. Riffle just mentioned, I just want to thank all the military students out there, military individuals, being retired military and having a spouse who was military and grew up, going to different schools. It's, it's very difficult for students when they're moving into a locality and trying to meet new students or meet new friends and create new friends and then having to leave them. So having us be able to do this for them, I think is something very beneficial for the students, so I appreciate that and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hossein. Mrs. Henley?
So this is the last quarter for our students and staff, they have to finish strong. I know they have the, that three-letter word, SOLs coming up in May. Spring fever is probably going to hit a little bit, but just encouraging everyone to finish strong. And also on the three, I had three students come up to talk about lacrosse, and I just wanted to say, speaking as an individual, and I'm, I'm sure my colleagues feel as well, there seems to be a perception that we don't want lacrosse. In fact, we were working towards, moving towards in that direction. There's some things, as you can see, barriers that are there that we were trying to work through. So I just don't want anyone to think that only Mr. Hossein is fighting for lacrosse. We all want children to have access, but we have to do it, you know, we have, look at the thing with Cooley Field now, so it seems like there's just barriers. But I don't want people to think that, that impression that we did not want lacrosse as a, as a sport. So, and if I'm speaking for others, I'm sorry, but I will definitely speak for myself. Anything that children have access to is, is important, and that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Dr. Kavazos?
I'm going to be very brief. It just seems obvious tonight that the momentum for lacrosse to be a VHSL sport is rapidly growing. I think now it's time to move forward, to move this concept to reality.
Thank you, Dr. Kavazos. Ms. Chen?
I'll also be brief. I hope everybody had a restful spring break last week. And I, typically during our meetings from the dais, I say a little sort of plug for CAC, but since we don't have our CAC until tomorrow, I didn't get to do that today. So I'll just briefly reiterate that I'm excited for the exceptional games coming up. And the CAC meeting is tomorrow, if there are any interested parents who would like to come join our meeting. And then one last thing to build off of what my colleagues have said about purple up and supporting the military child and family, I also wanted to recognize any of our, our students, past and present, who are, who have graduated and who are serving in the military as somebody who is about to launch a child off into college in the next year or so. We have many friends who have had to, you know, yeah, it's just, I just wanted to recognize that group of students, and there's a lot of students that are going into the military. So just great appreciation for that service.
Mrs. Donner?
Just wanted to thank all of our volunteers who were recognized tonight. It's so important that we have folks who are interested in our schools from the community, and so really appreciate that time and effort that they come to share their wisdom with our students. From a fun note, SHIP is one of my favorite programs that we have and being supported by the Williamsburg Health Foundation. And so for some of the SHIP clubs, they are ending in the spring, and I got to hang out and play kickball with the kickball club at Matthew Whaley. It was students or kids versus adults. Some adults' shoe went flying, the ball went one way and the shoe went the other way. I don't think anybody got injured, which was more on the adult side, less on the kid's side. So that was just always a joy and just a wonderful opportunity to be in schools and seeing how we, again, the Williamsburg Health Foundation is investing in our community and how our teachers then spend time after school with our kids and developing them in all different sorts of activities from cooking to walking, running martial arts, dance, and kickball. And that's my comments.
My question, did the kids win or did the adults win? Or was it a tie?
Adults won, but I don't think it's fair when you have adults playing against eight-year-olds.
Okay.
So, yeah, it probably wasn't. But it was, it was a, it was a, the, the adults first, first inning kind of kicking the ball. The third, the third and fourth graders kind of stepped it up in the, in the later innings. So, yeah.
Well, I'm not sure I'm going to follow that, to be honest. Yes, thank you to all of our, our volunteers, everyone who offers their time and talents in a variety of ways, and it's not just the people who are recognized here tonight, but there are people all across our community who do wonderful things in our schools for our, for our students every day and maybe never get recognized, but we thank you anyway. Thank you, of course, to our military families, service members, spouses, children, parents of, of service members. Every, everyone sacrifices in a way, in a significant way, but it's not always as visible if you aren't the one wearing the uniform. And so want to make a special shout out to those kids and families and everyone who supports our military. Every single one of us benefits tremendously from everything that they do. And we don't, most of the time, don't even think about it, and yet we, we enjoy the fruits of their labor and everything that that entails. So thank you to that, to those people. And thank you to our, our budget team. I know it's been a long, a long season and we're, we're getting there, but I know it's been a lot of moving numbers around and trying to figure this out. We appreciate, appreciate all the work that goes into it, all the discussions, everything that we, we learn throughout the process from our teachers, from our students. It is the sport's desire to meet, meet the needs that are expressed to us, that we want to compensate our teachers, we want our children to learn, we want to become a premier school division, and that is absolutely our goal and our focus with everything that we do. So I will conclude with that. Some quick announcements, we have upcoming events, the Special Education Advisory Committee, as Ms. Chen said, will meet tomorrow at 5:00 PM in room three hundred of the annex. The James Blair Middle School Renaming Consideration Committee will meet also tomorrow, 4:16 at 5:30 PM here at James Blair Middle School. It doesn't say a room, but it's here in the school. VSBA, Tidewater Region Spring Networking Forum on April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at 4:30 PM in Woodside High School in Newport News. Several of us are attending that, and I will mention that when we were at a conference in Richmond, the Tidewater Region, all the regional teams got together to set their agenda for their regional meetings, and, and our board did suggest bringing up lacrosse with our regional, with our Tidewater Region and their... with our regional, with our Tide Water Region, and there, there was at least interest to have it on the agenda. I can't, I can't say what will come of that, but there was significant enough acknowledgement that that is something that could and should be discussed. So I think that's, that's positive. Sorry, it's a little aside. Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet at April 23rd, 25 at 3:30 PM in room three hundred of the school board central office. And Student Advisory Committee will meet on April 30th at 3:00 PM at Lafayette High School Media Center. Our meetings, our next work session, closed session begins at 3:45 on May 6th in room three hundred of the annex. That will be followed by a work session and action items, also May 6th, starting at 4:30, room three hundred in the annex of the school board. And then our regular meeting, closed session will begin at 5:00 PM on May 20th in room three hundred of the annex, followed by the regular meeting, also 5:20 at 6:30 PM here in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.